Before we go into recognition of visitors, Ms. Keys has asked if she could address the audience.
Thank you for allowing me to speak with your time. I just wanted to take the floor for a moment and address the audience. I'm really glad to see all of you here each week, and I mean that sincerely. As you may recall, my first order of business as a newly installed board member on December 7th, 2021, was advocating for a larger venue so that we could encourage more parent and community involvement. Thank you for answering that call and giving us the opportunity to engage with you on a regular basis. We want to encourage all stakeholders to become active participants in the educational process of our youth. Your level of engagement at these meetings is encouraging. Last meeting, there were many here with shirts that read "Kids First," and I could not agree with a few more. I have been serving the kids in this community in multiple areas for over 20 years, and I'm excited to see so many faces willing to step up and volunteer to be part of that call. I would also like to take this opportunity to speak to those who spoke at the podium. Listen, we all have choices to make. I choose to express forgiveness and love to everyone, just as I have done with many others in my life, as many here have duly pointed out. Many of you see this as one of my biggest character flaws. However, I see this as my greatest strength. Know this truth: We are all imperfect human beings, and we all make mistakes. And it is through love and forgiveness that we can ever truly find hope, the hope that is needed to continue to work towards being the best people that we can be in this life. I hope that for all of our sakes, and for the sakes of our children and our grandchildren, that the people in this community never make a mistake, or that there are others in this world like me who are willing to give people a second chance. I pray for each and every one of us, that we can find it within ourselves to learn to forgive one another, and that we can work together to repair the damage done to the education of our youth over the last few years. We will need teachers, parents, grandparents, and others in the community to step up and help out, to help this administration to rebuild what has been lost, and to help restore faith in our educational system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Keys. Recognition of visitors. Kaye Wyker.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? I'm inviting any of you to present this information to me and let you know by not giving me this information, it is breaking the law. Yesterday, I sent several new certified letters to Rebecca Furman of the American Support in Harrisburg, Marge Barr, account manager of Willis Towers &amp; Watson, Leah Chapman, Secretary of State, Julie Markine, Chief Financial Officer of Chester County, and Nicole Forzato, Chester County Solicitor. My next batch of letters will go out by Friday, and they will include the sheriff of Chester County and Pennsylvania Sheriff's Association. I am also putting in a complaint to the Pennsylvania Department of Educational School Service Unit, Director, for this school board's handling of the protocols for involving stakeholders of this grant and its true meaning, and how it related to mandates our children had to endure because of it. I urge you all to think about what these letters and the findings will have on this board, the Oxfordary School District, and our children, and remember ignorance is not an excuse. Also, any retaliation of me, my family, or my acquaintances that takes place because of this will be dealt with swiftly with civil action. I was called by the actions of this board, not only for the issues these letters will address, last month's gathering and comments by the public were obviously orchestrated, all rules of conduct, and what could and could not have done is broken. You allowed people to address the board members by name and to tell their local stories that have nothing at all to do with the truth behind these comments. You allowed a man to stand here and attack her and her family, and this is very inappropriate and unacceptable. I think civil action is probably required. Mr. Blessington was attacked for God only knows what reason. Everybody wants to get up here and say, you know, keep the politics out of it, but the only reason Mr. Blessington would be attacked would be political. Mr. Ty, I don't find you a very good board president. I think that you do not stick to what you say, and you do not know Robert's rules. And basically, I find that this board is a puppet for Mr. Woods. And don't think for one minute that I'm the only one who teaches that, because I'm not. I would like to know why this board did not admonish Mr. Claus for his outburst against Mrs. Keys last month, why that was not put on the school board's website, like you did to Mrs. Keys for her saying a few words. It's unacceptable. You don't treat one person different than the other person. I don't see anybody outraged at what Mr. Claus did last month. Not one person. And that's disgusting. Mrs. Keys was elected by the people who do exactly what she has done and continues to do. The people who attacked her gathered 15 minutes of pain, and now it's time to move on. It's time for board members... Yes, I'm saying it. It's time for board members to step down so that the district's children can get the proper education that they deserve. Next month, I will have my letter of intent for every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wyker. Sarah Thomas.
Sarah Thomas, Onsuboro West. I just wanted to come up here and let you know that this case is detrimental to our future in this district, and it's time for her to resign. The constant insertion of her personal political agenda is going to cost our students literally. It's time for her to resign. At the last meeting, she mentioned that what she was stating was from emails from the community, so I'm staying here to let you know she does not speak for me or for my family. It's time for her to resign. Her radicalized views are abhorrent and anti-science. I feel shame that she's on our school board. I voted in every election and have voted for others because I knew her anti-mask views were based on radicalized politics that would only cause dissension and ultimately hurt our students. I was disgusted to see her anti-mask signs on our school properties during the height of the pandemic on Election Day, which is unethical, if not illegal, and it's time to resign. It's evident from social media posts of her, family, and their private groups that their goal is to insert their radicalized political views into our school system. This is further evidenced by the inflammatory language she uses regarding our student populations and the pushback she gives surrounding the perception of the health and safety plan which could provide funding that our schools desperately need. It's time to resign. Thank you, Mr. Claus, for speaking up during the last meetings. I agree the governor needs to keep her politically radicalized agenda out of our school board. This school board needs to act to work to get things accomplished. It's time to resign. I moved my family here almost seven years ago from a district where everyone looks like me. I specifically moved here so that they would experience diversity, because that's what the real world is. Understanding each other and appreciating our differences is a skill that each student in this district needs to take with them into the real world, which is just as diverse as this district is. My children and my family love the diverse friends that we make here. It's time to resign. As I've already said, I did not vote for Jennifer, because I knew that this was coming because of her radicalized platform. I'm just really sad to see how quickly this has escalated and how much it's already hurt our districts. However, I'm not surprised. The whole goal of the fringe radicalized party is to purposely cause dissension and to destroy our public schools. Jennifer says that things can change, that she can change, but she was just on the radio stating the exact same thing that she's been saying the whole time. Our students are the ones that suffer. It's time to resign. As elected officials, you work for me, and you work for everyone in this room. And as your boss, I have a request that if any of you don't have the best interest of each student in mind, and that's every student, regardless of their status, their color, their orientation, religion, or their lack thereof, then you need to resign. Ms. Kess, you know if you don't, you show us that, so it's time to resign. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wyker. Shelley Metropop.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shelley Metropop. I live in East Soundham Township. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I appreciate your sentence earlier. I really did. And I do want to apologize. I learned Friday while listening to the Chris Segal show that you pronounce your name Kaye. So, and not Keys, as we have all been previously pronouncing it, so for that, I'm sorry. And to be honest, I've been wondering if maybe there's a bit of a misunderstanding, so I want to speak tonight to make sure we're all very clear. Mrs. Kays, we are asking for you to resign. As we've said before, we aren't going away, and honestly, we can thank...
Please make sure you're...
Oh, sorry. All right. Thank you. Sorry. As you said before, we aren't going away, and honestly, we can only thank Mrs. Kays who continued coming at these meetings. You said one misstep is that. She said one misstep is that. And if you had simply spoken in January meeting and didn't double down and use xenophobic comments at the next meetings, the support of resignation probably would have slowed down and gone away, to be honest. But everyone is still here. We're here, and we will continue to be here because she continues to make bad decisions as a board member and continually chooses to bring partisan politics into discussing policies that come before our board. First, she pushed the rest of the policy committee on her desire to change the language to separate out students who she believes are undocumented children so that we, quote-unquote, know exactly who they are and what's going on in our community. I would like to take a second to thank the other policy committee members who didn't support this change. We see you. We see you with the work you're doing, and we're thankful for you. Then at the next meeting, Mrs. Kays fought against the district taking over $6 million in ESTER funding that we desperately need as a district. Why? Well, it was because of conspiracy theories that the federal government gives this money with strings attached. It's a grant. Grants have to be applied for and have stipulations. They always have. Stipulations keep the grant winner honest so that the money is spent for what it's intended for. It's not attaching strings. It's how grant processes work. They don't get to come in, and how some of the supporters that have spoken tonight and previously almost speak after me said that the CDC are going to take our children for 72 hours for forceful vaccinations. That's just scaring up people, and that's just asinine. But she doubled down again and kept fighting the QAnon fight, supported by people who sued board members based on a QAnon-backed website called Bonds for the Win, holding our school board hostage due to superfluous litigation verbatim by templates on this website. And finally, she decides that rather than address anyone who's female nervous concerns, so this will be updated. Thank you for addressing us tonight. But you go on a conservative talk show host out of Philadelphia, and on this show, you talk trash on our superintendent, your fellow board members who are actually trying to do their jobs on the board, but say they have a dereliction of duties, and then, I quote, "They just aren't doing the job they were hired to do or elected to do." And then you go on to blame the board for your inability to read public documents, the Health and Safety Plan, before you took a seat on the board officially. They were available on the district's website for all to read. I was one of them. And then you dare...
Ms. Metropop, you have to address your comments to me.
Okay, sorry. Can I say, if you want to talk, like, okay, sorry. And then she dared to say that she believes our students need some more support in our schools because they are suffering. After all of this, she publicly said and wants to refuse funding that could give our students those increased supports. And if there's something that you really wanted and not something you're using to cover your own rent, why has she not opened her mouth, brought forward policies or ideas that could actually help her students instead of causing a ruckus on the board, using assumptions, and saying that those students are bringing our district down in rankings? Let's be honest, people have come forward saying that they voted for... Thank you. People have come forward saying that they voted for Mrs. Keys, even some volunteered for your campaign. And they've come to talk to me, and they said they're angry, and they want her off the board as well. I'm sure a few of them will be speaking at the next meeting. So the excuse that Mrs. Keys was elected and can do no wrong is quite ridiculous. These people have said to me, "We spoke to her about masking. She never said anything that she would fight against funding or anything about what she said about these children. We were duped," quote-unquote. Not just one person either. This is not just a small group of moms that are speaking out against your continued actions on the board. Continued actions, not one slip of the tongue. This is a community of parents, students, business owners, grandparents, taxpayers, alumni, and community activists who have had enough. We are not a paper tiger, as Mr. Segal says. We are your neighbors who think it's time for you to go. You're a black guy in our community. You need to step down.
Karen Flandelroy.
The Health and Safety Plan takes away our constitutional rights. And I know all of you who sit on the board, especially people that have been up there for more than 20 years, know exactly what I'm talking about. So you continue to have this doggone pony show, and you continue to allow it to just manifest. You all know. I know you know. I know you're well educated. You all know. You all know you're wrong. At this point, I don't feel bad at all. Sorry. I don't feel bad. For one minute, do you think this is not going to go through? Because it is. The schools have the right, under the Health and Safety Plan, to vaccinate. They have the right to do mental screenings. They have the right to isolate and quarantine your kids without properly defining what that means and what that doesn't mean. I would be real happy if it said, "We'll never take your kids to an off-site campus." That would... That would settle me. The $6.5 million that the doggone pony show thinks is going to the school, we all know only 20% of it goes to education. And now with that 20%, when you divide by the number of kids in the school system, Mr. Ty, it's not 1,600, as you had mentioned in one of the school board meetings. It's only $330 per child. And now with that $330 per child, it's going to be SEL learning and critical race theory.
We're going to have to... We're going to have to sound out. She has as much right to speak as anyone else.
Critical... I don't know. I find it to disgrace. I know you all know it's a disgrace. The Health and Safety Plan, you have no rights. It's against our constitutional rights. It's against every member's constitutional right. You can turn around tomorrow and say you can put the masks back on, because you signed something saying that, "I'll take the $6 million. I'll put the masks back on the kids." So if they say that the masks back on the kids, they have to. You can do whatever you want. It doesn't say COVID vaccine. It says vaccine. It would be the next pandemic. And we all know it. And I know you're calling, and I know you're all saying, "Oh, we don't understand. We don't understand." Please. Ladies, Mrs. Kays, and what she said on the radio was not trashing the superintendent. What she said on the radio was very flassy, and she said for a point when she has allowed her opinion, just like everybody else is. And when somebody has to come up and say something bad about somebody's character in that manner, then you know where the right side is.
Thank you, Ms. Wyker. Ms. Ronnie Lutz.
I appreciate the gig going down at a level... Get you too.
Good evening. My name is Ronnie Lutz, and I'm again here to address the board in regards to the ESTER 3 funding, as well as the Home Policy Division. The ESTER 3 funding, in your belief, is critical to the district budget, when in fact only 20% addresses the academic deficit in FERC. The majority is for systemic implementation of SEL, which can be found on the state Board of Education ARP Guidebook, page 12, that it is for the systemic implementation of SEL in our schools, period. Not my words, their words. It is also for the regular mental health screenings of students without parental consent or knowledge, implementation of outside mental health organizations. What does that have to do with improving the education of our children? Not a damn thing. It also provides for, when the government says so, that there will be vaccine clinics on these properties. The school will be purchasing these vaccines and paying the staff incentives to promote the vaccines. Again, that is from the federal Q and A guide on page 23. This is the federal government's words, not mine, and you know it. The funding is about agenda, not education. This funding is about federal control over the physical and psychological health of the children. Yes, at the moment, it appears as though COVID has just disappeared because mainstream media is giving it no intention at the moment. But in case you all missed it, last week, Biden, Anne Saki, and several others made it quite clear that the COVID emergency executive order has not been dismissed. And the reason it has not been dismissed is so that it can be resurrected at their convenience on our children. So don't tell me this ESTER 3 funding and the Health and Safety Plan require compliance has nothing to do with our children. This is about agenda. Who's making this political? It sure as heck isn't me. It is the government and your compliance with the government. That is what this is about. This funding is a control mechanism. Where was the Health and Safety compliance requirement with ESTER 1 and ESTER 2? It wasn't there because it was a different administration. That's why. That's why. This Health and Safety Plan, you can word smith it any which way but loose. You, Mr. Woods, stated multiple times, policies and strategies will remain in place. You can word smith it any way you want to tickle the parents' ears. You are not changing the parameters and compliance requirements of the federal government. Do not lie to us.
Thank you, Ms. Lutz.
It's in public, so...
Megan Street Baxter. Is that right, Street? Megan.
She had to leave it.
I think I'm missed. Kathy... Nope, I'm not.
W looks like I.
Doesn't matter. You don't have a right to privacy when you're in public.
There you go. I'm so sorry.
Good evening. My name's Kathy Wildwell, and I'm a third-year resident of Old Township. My children have both been at the Tenet Observatory School District, beginning with kindergarten and graduating in 2008, 2011. There are two points I would like to make regarding the recent board meeting on February 22nd. First, I want to compliment Mr. Patterson for exemplifying how constructive dialogue should be exchanged among fellow board members. He made the effort to contribute to the review and editing of an important policy that will or could dictate how the district will respond in a future health emergency. Mr. Patterson and Mrs. Kays were engaging in thoughtful discussions regarding the specifics of the Health and Safety Plan as part of the ESTER funding. And I'm not against the funding. I mean, if that's something that's going to help our children. The point is just to really look at the word carefully and have a dialogue about what's the best... What are the important words that are included in there? I guess the strings, whatever, but the list of the compliances, compliance issues. On the other hand, Mr. Claus exemplified he hated that was condescending, arrogant, and times over. He was verbally abusive and completely outlying, considering the form where this exchange was placed. His ignorant outburst directed at fellow board member should never be tolerated by you, Mr. Woods, nor by Mr. Ty, who had given your position to his interview. Whether or not Mr. Claus agrees with the points being made or the questions being asked by his peers, he certainly does not have the right to accuse anyone of facing any of these ideas or questions they present in one of their politics. And referring to policy 9510 of the bylaws of the board, the cadence of conduct of the board says that, one of the bullet numbers says striving toward ideal conditions for effective board service to our community in spirit of teamwork and devotion to the public education is a great instrument for preserving and perpetuating our representative democracy. Further down, it says accordingly, "Board members should work together in a spirit of harmony, respect, and cooperation despite differences of opinion." And also, as a dad, I'm very proud to have questions and be comfortable bringing up the questions that each board member feels is important. It also says another, "Well, personal decisions should be based upon all sufficient facts. We should live our honest conviction without partisan lies, and we will abide by our honest conviction without partisan lies. We will abide an impulsive majority decision of the board." That being said, with the policy in mind, the conduct policy, it would also be encouraging to hear and put the other board members regarding this and other policies and issues being discussed. That is why we're elected to this position, as was Mrs. Kays. The idea that the issues of the buildings, the things that weren't properly replaced in hallways, which are rather Mr. Claus, as being more urgent, not that they aren't urgent or they aren't important, but they can also be discussed alongside other important policies, such as a more complicated policy that can impact the health, personal health, and the medical freedom of the students of the district in years to come. And finally, I would hope that the board would exhibit a modicum of respect now that it's been mentioned a few times, that it has been mentioned broadly since then. That was Mrs. Kays and Mrs. Kess. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wyker. Nikki Bolter.
I'm going to address some of the comments that were raised already. My grandmother died of COVID. My father is a liver transplant because he was president. It is very important that you protect our children. I'm not saying that you should acquire masks, but please use your common sense as you talk through the Health and Safety Plan. Also, the ESTER funding is not only 20%. Also, the ESTER funding is not only twenty percent. It is at least twenty percent for the education recovery. Now, from what I was going to say, discrimination and humanity are a worldwide issue. I find the fact that we have almost seventy-five thousand visitors on a petition to support the children of Oxford University Freedom Initiative. Yes, this list includes many local residents and alumni, but also the world is watching. We have supporters all across this country and even the world. People from England, Australia, New Zealand are actively watching the current events of Oxford. They signed this petition because they care about the education and wellbeing of all children. I wish every board member sitting up there could say the same, that they care about the well-known wellbeing of all children in Oxford. However, based on Jennifer K's comments at recent meetings and some powerful posts on Michael Blessington's public social media, it is clear that they are not here to support our immigrant students. However, the love that the world is showing our students will always outshine the people's comments or posts. And he has brought the community together to stand up for our children. Now we're going to read some comments from the petition. Elena Roke wrote, "As a former student representative to the school board and graduate of Oxford, I find Mrs. Case remarks are totally figurative and far out of line with appropriate conduct for our representatives for school board. On the most basic possible level, school board representatives are charged with protecting and bettering the lives of our students, all students, as every child is entitled to an education. Reps are not charged with inserting a political abuse, lack of respect for basic human rights, and baseless misinformation in policies designed to better our district. The status of documentation of Oxford students is not only not the school board's business legally, but simply does not matter, as these students and their families have done nothing but contribute positively to the Oxford community." Mrs. Case has made it clear that she does not have the best interest of all students at heart, but is more interested in advancing the global race and national history goals brought on by obvious personal issues, personality issues, and illusion. Any representative who views some students as a parent lesser than others has no place on any representative body, no place on the school board, and quite frankly, no place in a community that is shouldered almost exclusively by the hard work, cultural contributions, and academic success of the immigrant population. Resignation is the only option. I am ashamed to be from Oxford as long as you remain on the board. Adal Hampton from Oxford wrote, "Jennifer Case leads to go with bigotry and hate does not represent this town, no lives, and this institution, the embarrassment that she brings." Turner Heinele from Oxford wrote, "The day children are held at fault for trying to learn, the day that the country, Mrs. Case clearly cares about so much, falls apart." Mario Tuchus wrote, "My brother goes to this school and it is repulsive to see how someone in charge of bettering his education is only focused on legal facts of the student, rather than focusing on how to better for educational purposes." And some comments from our worldwide supporters. Sharon Alsop wrote, "I accept her influence and clapping, we must fight for every child to get a full decent education wherever we live."
One minute, Ms. Bolter.
Thank you. Lee Thomas from Australia wrote, "The whole world is watching. To the immigrant families in our district, the world is supporting them. To board with any board member that does not fully support all students, including immigrant students, please resign now."
Megan Jackson?
My name is Megan Jackson. I am from the East Alphacounship District. I sat at the last official board meeting and watched you, Mr. Woods, taking the time to pause meetings, make corrections after one of the speakers, when they apparently misquoted what percentage of U of S students named a salary increase or whatever. If that person was incorrect, then I completely agree that that correction should have been made publicly right there on the spot. But then I saw you sit quietly, when time and time again, speakers got up, accusing Mrs. Case of openly advocating for immigrant students to not receive a public school education because of their immigration stats. You allowed that incorrect correction. For that, you sat quiet. Your lack of defense indicating to Mrs. Case, to the board, and to the audience, that speaking those untruths was acceptable. When a fellow board member, Mr. Claus, verbally attacked Mrs. Case, cursing at her, and knowing that he would get a rise from the audience, again, no correction from you. You allowed that behavior, indicating to Mrs. Case, and to the board, and to the audience, that that also was an acceptable behavior in your eyes. The fact that this circus continues at these board meetings rests squarely on your shoulders, Mr. Woods. You showed that you could shut down something that you disagreed with if someone speaking was being dishonest about the facts, which in this case was your salary increase, then you were quick to make the immediate correction. But lies being reverberated over and over again in front of the board publicly about another board member and what her intentions were for educating immigrants and homeless children, you allowed time and time again, without one single correction. So what is the threshold? Okay. So what is the threshold for the board to offer swift, firm public correction? Only if it pertains to Mr. Woods. It's shameful that the leadership skills of these two gentlemen is proving to be too weak to control the nonsense in this room. And quite frankly, if Mr. Woods can't control this insanity, how can he of taxpayers be confident with his leadership skills to lead an entire school district? You're allowing the tail to wag the dog. Instead of taking control of the mob, you are letting the mob control you. I came to the last board meeting and I watched as you allowed one man to stand at the podium and not actually speak, just stand, for five minutes. This man encouraged others who were not invited to speak to also stand. It was a form of intimidation and you allowed that. Even as you were basically mocked by this non-speaker standing at the podium while he took selfies like a juvenile so he could post them on local Facebook groups where he is lapping up every ounce of attention he can get from his immature antics at your expense. When we went to the polls last election, it was to elect someone with strength to the board. And Mrs. Case has demonstrated just that. Strength not just from the mistreatment she has received from people in these social media test polls, but also strength in the mistreatment from her own fellow board member. And your weakness, your weakness is just magnifying her strength. So I'm going to close my five minutes with the same ending from my last five minutes when I addressed the board. Please stop the bullying and the intimidation. Be an example to our children how to respect and support one another even if we disagree with them. Show some strength and leadership. And if, Mr. Ty, you can't do that, then I think that you should resign. I'm also asking for Mr. Claus's resignation as he has demonstrated a complete lack of professionalism on more than one occasion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Marcy Wicks?
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Marcy Wicks and I'm a lifelong resident of Oxford. I'm a parent and a local small business owner. I hold a master's degree in behavior analysis and I'm a licensed behavior specialist. What that means is, I've spent thousands of hours answering the question, why do we do the things that we do? In my thirteen years as a clinician, this is the first school board meeting I have ever been inspired to attend, after observing multiple egregious statements made by Mrs. Case. What I'm struggling to make sense of is, why would a person go through all of the trouble of campaigning and running for school board and then engage in behavior directly harming children? Why would they make public statements that unmistakably devalue and degrade children who are such an important and cherished asset to our community? And then ignore the impact they've had only to reiterate over and over in their attention? There is an important distinction between intention and impact. I was again puzzled hearing the statements made by Mrs. Case where she states with such conviction that our children, their freedom is not for sale, as if accepting ESTER funds would be synonymous with shuffling our children. An extremist and absurd statement intended to fear monger and insult us. First of all, these are not your children. They are our children. In the last eighteen months, there has been a twenty-two percent increase in referrals for mental health services, an alarming fifty percent increase in female pediatric hospital admissions for suspected suicides. And there are hundred and forty thousand children who lost a caregiver to COVID. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, and the Children's Hospital Association declared that the pandemic-related decline in child and adolescent mental health has become a national emergency. Yet she delays and unnecessarily jeopardizes funding that would have an immediate and direct impact on providing mental health and educational services to support our children and staff in this district. I personally and professionally believe that there are far greater risks and people in our community that our children need to be protected from than funding agreements. We have learned that when we ask a person to stop engaging in self-destructive behavior, it's important to reflect on what they can do instead. But that isn't a decision I can make for you. I am asking you, Mrs. Case, to please consider an alternative. Redirect this political energy anywhere else. And what you should do instead of coming to these meetings is resign.
Thank you.
Amanda Watson? Ah, it is, I am so sorry, Amanda Wolston, speak now.
Amanda Wolston, I'm from Borough. Mrs. Case had me given the opportunity to direct my comments to you and I give myself to the entirety of the board. I would say that my opinions are my own and I speak only for myself. I'm not here as a representative of Borough Council or any other entity. I am here because Mrs. Case called my attention. As a parent in this district, I am concerned about her ability to lead a diverse school system. I am an advocate for immigrants. The past decade, I have been part of the fight to help deportations of thousands of undocumented yet legally adopted people back to those countries. As a doctor myself, I have watched adopted families in Fort Worth and my peers sent back to countries where they also no longer have citizenship because there are too many people with uninformed opinions making decisions from platforms that they do not deserve. Although we're talking about local issues here, Mrs. Case's words affect countless people that I consider to be my family. As a doctoral student, I study issues like these. Right now, I have to keep doing an intensive study of leadership. These are my thoughts. This uproar about Mrs. Case is a predictable outcome. Our government has checks and balances that the mistakes of our two leaders don't topple our entire democratic system. No resident can closely follow or monitor every government body all time. Meetings like these here tend to have late-term off-when times when residents can trust that business is running well. It did not occur to voters that the decency and stonewalling of just one or two board members could be so disruptive. And now exhausted parents are vigilantly monitoring our school board to make sure that we don't lose six million dollars in funding or violate federal protections for immigrant children. Mrs. Case has violated our trust and she is done, nothing to fix that. This isn't just about fraud and lethal. Mrs. Case was dishonest. She made multiple false claims about immigrant children and expected those false claims to have a real impact on policy directly on that table at that moment. She removed any chance of trust by involving her husband. This was highly inappropriate. He made an apology for her and in the end of it, this apology tried to convince us that we didn't all hear her say what she said. He blamed you, Mr. Ty, for his wife's words. And now this case continues to show that it is unsafe to trust her by continuing to move the bold moves as to what it would take to admit that she was wrong. Most recently, she claimed that she just wanted the public to know that undocumented children are here. Mr. Ty, even if that is what Mrs. Case had mentioned along the line, still have won it. The immigrant children who caught her attention on monitor by Homeland Security and are cared for by privately contracted child placement agencies. What relevance do I as a resident have to any of that? I don't want to be notified. I don't want my school district to violate a prior decision, especially for no reason. In a community of a small but impactful anti-immigrant undercurrent, it would be unsafe to these children for the school to make such notifications. However, I should be notified as a resident if something affects the safety of my children, which is a subject that really leads into my district. Mrs. Case had made a mistake. She could have made a remorseful apology, but instead she demands forgiveness without having to say, "I'm sorry." She could have volunteered for an organization that serves immigrants to give back to where the words have taken away. She could have modeled for our children what it was like for a leader to accept responsibility for a mistake that she didn't. Mr. Ty, I know you don't want to be responsible for what other board members say, but I ask you, if all of those board members here are to accept responsibility anyway. If Mrs. Case will not accept responsibility for herself, someone has to. We as parents are here to take responsibility for her. Although I disagree with her words, her friends can even come here to try and take responsibility for her. We have had multiple children come to this podium to take responsibility for her. And this includes two children who took here and accepted, stood here in front of us by themselves and accepted blame for the test scores. Mrs. Case is a member of our community and as such, we are fully pertinent. We are calling her to the carpet. We are asking her to relinquish her responsibility to our children which she has in the shoes and resign from her position. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Dustin Brecker?
Good evening, Mr. Simon, members of the school board. My name is Dustin Smithman. I'm a resident of East Alphacounship. My wife and I have three children in the district, one at Hens Grove and two at Nottingham. We have lived in Oxford for nearly ten years and we have enjoyed being a part of this community. My wife owns a business in Oxford and I recently started serving as a student mentor for the Oxford Educational Foundation. I am a tanager, professor, and research fellow, and I study and teach management and organizational behavior. I specialize in decision-making biases, conflict resolution, and teams. Like many others in our community, I've been closely observing the activities of the school board over the last few months. Like many others in our community, I've been closely observing the activities of the school board over the last few months, and I wanted to share my thoughts. In my view, a school board is a unique kind of team. The work you do requires a significant time commitment and knowledge of education laws of federal and state office. Your work is very important and it shapes the education of thousands of children. And because your work has such a direct impact on others, you face a great deal of hope of pressure as you make decisions. Given these challenges that you face, I find it interesting to think about what may have motivated each of you to run for school board in the first place. Helping our children or serving the community are the easy answers that I'm sure everyone would endorse, that's a given. Beyond this, perhaps some of you were seeking a leadership role or were passionate on a single issue that you wanted the school system to address. Others may have been encouraged to run for the board because a friend or a spouse encouraged you to do it. People have different motivations for joining the school board and that's okay. However, it's not okay if someone's motivation is distracting the board from its core mission of helping to educate our children. We can't get inside the head of each board member to know exactly what is motivating you, but we can figure it out by observing your actions. Recently, the school board was in the process of revising the policy related to the beginning of the year. Then the board was presented with an opportunity to receive $6.4 million in federal S R funding. Much of this money could be put to good use by improving educational technology, supporting learning programs in mental health, and providing many other resources to help our teachers, staff, and children. Unfortunately, the same board member objected to receiving this money because of the health and safety plan that it required to safeguard against an ongoing global pandemic. She strongly felt that the rights of individuals in our district would be stripped away if they were to follow the guidance of public health officials. These passionate convictions paint a clear picture of what motivated this individual to serve on the board. Why push so hard and deeply devise an immigration issue in a local school district? Why try to reject $6.4 million for good use to help our schools as an active protest against public health officials? Because the school board is deemed to use a platform to advance national politics. Targeting immigrants and rejecting public health efforts are part of the culture wars that are being promoted on partisan news networks and social media. Some people get pulled into the circus of national politics and conspiracy theories, and their political beliefs turn into moral convictions. It's important to note that this is not a matter of left versus right. People who are extreme partisans can be on either side of the political spectrum. A party does not matter. They have no place in a local school. Thank you, sir. The culture wars have infiltrated our school board. So what's next? Perhaps a ban on looks that go against the school board members' political ideology, preventing teachers from discussing certain aspects of gender, race, or developing textbooks that ignore uncomfortable aspects of our nation's history. Years ago, culture wars involved things like doing everything we can to stop kids from listening to rock music or preventing women from exposing their angles in public. History tells us these culture wars are just temporary fears that get blown out of proportion. To be honest, if I were a member of the school board right now, I would be very frustrated. Artisan politics is throwing sand in your ears, it's slowing down your decision-making and distracting you from doing the important work that's needed in our community. But it's going to get worse unless you call it out. You are a team, a team that's critical to our community. Please work together and hold your teammates accountable to not use the board as a political platform, but stay focused on what matters, supporting our children's education. Thank you.